... board of commissioners meeting with the town president, Mayor Jeff Mason presiding.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Uh, Mr. Malden, would you lead us in prayer? And before you do, remember Ron Pascal, our Commissioner Ron Pascal's uh, son is having surgery today. He's been hospitalized, been sick, so keep them in the family. And uh, thank you all again for the prayers for my wife. We're uh, we're still with her chemo and everything's going well with that, so.
Shout out to pray. Our almighty high holy, heavenly Father, we bow before you this evening. We approach the throne of your grace. Father, we thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us each and every day. Father, we thank you for allowing us to live in this country, Father, to live in this state. Thank you for giving us the ability to be able to exercise the freedoms that we do. Father, we thank you for allowing us to have voices. Father, we ask that you be with each and every person throughout this meeting tonight. Father, we pray that we will conduct ourselves in a manner that is pleasing to you, Father. We pray that we uphold integrity, Lord, and that we'll do everything, look to you when we can, Father. We'll do everything, have a good time, Father. Pray that you be with those who have been missioned here, Father. Thank you for the recovery of Ms. Mason, Father. Pray that you continue to be with her throughout her recovery, Father, and be with that family. Pray that you be with Mr. Pascal's son, Father. Pray that you be with Barry Cohn as well, as they're going through a different period, various medical treatments, Father, or ailments, Father. Pray that they on, uh, we be with those that provide care for them. Hope them to provide the best care, Lord. Be with every one of us, hope that we wrap our arms around them and support them and comfort them in any way that we can, Father. We're so thankful for your grace and your mercy and the attention of your sons and daughters, Father. We pray, Lord, that each and every person here has come to know him. Father, we thank you for giving us the hope of an eternal life with you, for all beings of your word. In thy name we pray.
Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Before I keep it over and it goes rolling. Just roll call, Miss Stacy.
Lady and Gregory.
Here.
Helen Bowes.
Here.
Terry Givens.
Here.
Billy Bass.
Here.
Freddie Kirby.
Here.
Charles Cant. Ron Pascal. Scotty Barrett. Matt Dean.
Here.
Erica Abel.
Here.
Cordell Smith.
Here.
Danny Irizarry. Stephen Leach.
Here.
Eddie Stowe.
Here.
Casey Elrod.
Here.
Justin Martin.
Here.
Barry Cahoon. Tommy Bane.
Here.
Junior Fields.
Here.
Connor McDonald. Tim Keller.
Here.
Danny Tuff.
Here.
Craig Delarosa.
Here.
Seventeen present. Okay, this special call meeting was called by commissioners. Tonight is an informational meeting for the commission, the audience here, and also those watching on the stream at home. Ben Rogers, our Smith County C Task Consultant, and his counterpart from Northern Middle Tennessee, Mr. Wesley Robertson, are here to make a presentation of the Financial Management Act of 1981. Once they are complete, the commissioners may ask them uh, or attendees questions. The public comment portion of tonight is complete because Stacy, we don't, no one signed in on public comment? Okay, alright, that is complete. We ask that you please remain quiet and order unless you are directly asked a question by a commissioner. If not commissioners have questions for C Task, I ask that you exchange contacts with Ben or Wesley after the meeting is adjourned. Ben and Wesley, you will have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just probably stand right here if that's okay. Commission, you okay over on the side if I'm here? Alright, as Jeff said, uh, Ben Rogers, this is my counterpart Wesley Robertson. I started with C Task in 2005 and Wesley's been here since 2011. We're county government consultants for our respective areas. I'm in Upper Cumberland, he's in North Middle Tennessee. Uh, we were asked by the commission and Mayor Mason to come and talk about the 1981 Centralization Financial Management Act. So at the end, just keep your questions and we'll make sure we answer all of them. Um, and we want to be clear and transparent about what the act is. So, Comptroller's Office Best Practice Recommendation says, accounting literature describes a best practice as a recommended policy, procedure, or technique that aids management in improving financial performance. Historically, the best practice has consistently shown superior results over conventional methods. In short, local government audit uh, believes that the item noted below is best practice that should be adopted by the governing body as a means of significantly improving accountability and equality of services provided to the citizens of Smith County. Smith County should adopt a central system of accounting, budgeting, and purchasing. This is from the Comptroller's Office. The Comptroller's Office is the regulatory authority for all counties and cities in Tennessee. When it comes to financials, audits, uh, debt management, that's where the regulatory authority is. C Task is an advisory service. We consult with counties and we give advice. Whether the the counties listen or not, that's that's not up to us, that's up to them. But we're here to give information. So I I we have this slide up here because this is the Comptroller's recommendation. We work together with the Comptroller's Office. So if we, people ask us what we think should happen, we always defer to the Comptroller's Office. This next slide is actually come from the Smith County Audit for fiscal year 22. So the audit that was completed just a couple of months ago, a few months ago, um, or actually a year ago or so, I don't go with the audit for 22 as well. Sometime after June, this is a recommendation. This is a recommendation for all counties in Tennessee that are not centralized. This wasn't just Smith County. It's all counties in Tennessee that does not have some form of centralization for accounting, purchasing, and budgeting. So this is straight out audit. You're welcome to go online and look at this if you want to see it there. Um, I don't think you can see it on this screen, but in the middle we had highlighted sound business practices dictate that establishing a central system would significantly improve internal controls over the accounting, budgeting, and purchasing processes. The absence of a central system of accounting, budgeting, and purchasing has been a management decision by the county commission resulting in decentralization and some duplication of effort. Straight from the audit. Alright, there's a couple methods of centralization, there's three methods actually. Uh, 57, which the county has adopted two portions of, the purchasing and the budgeting side of it. Our county and budgeting side of it, uh, just did the budgeting side, I think, last year of 57. It's not full centralization because the schools did not elect to include themselves into this act. The 57 gives the schools the option to exclude themselves or include themselves. I think there's three counties in the state that actually included themselves uh, in the 57. And that's a form of centralization where all county departments are under the same uh, office for as far as finance goes. The second one is the Central Financial Management System of 1981, which is what we're here to discuss. And then we do have a few counties across the state that have done a private act. Here's a slide, I know it's hard to see on this screen, uh, but 26 counties, I believe, 27 I think are under 1981. Uh, we have about uh, 20 more, I believe, close to 20 that are under 57. And uh, four of them, I'm sorry, four are with schools. So we have 10, I'm sorry, that are without schools, four that are with schools. So 14 are under 57, and it looks like we have 26 that are under 81. The uh, private acts, we have 11. And the rest are going to be under either the 93, which is basically a budgeting law that says you're going to pass the budget by July 15th. And the rest will be Metro, Charter, or General Law. So let's talk about the 81. Anytime you want to jump ahead, just grab it. Alright, 81 creates a financial management system for all county funds. All the county funds that run through the county trustee. Oh, perfect, thank you. That's what 81 does. Every dollar that runs through the trustee's office comes through the centralization under one office of finance office, okay? To implement or adopt the 1981 Act, the county commission, the legislative body of the county, has to adopt it by two-thirds vote. So in Smith County, there's currently 23 county commissioners, you have one vacancy. Two-thirds vote will be 16 people, alright? So in order to get this adopted, two-thirds vote, 16 votes by the county commission. Once adopted, the county is required to develop plans for implementing the financial system beginning July 1 of the next fiscal year and completing the process by August 1st of the second fiscal year. So what does that mean? If the county commission votes tonight, which I have no idea what in 10 years, this information session, so let's say they voted tonight, they would have 22 months to implement the system because it's 13 months for the next fiscal year, which will be July of 2024. So 13 months from July 2024 is the timeframe to adopt.
So the August of 25.
August of 25. So there's 22 months from tonight or 21 months from whatever, next month, to implement the 1981 financial management system. Once the system has been approved, there by law is the Financial Management Committee. That creates a county financial management committee that consists of seven members. Statutorily, the county mayor, director of schools, and the highway superintendent are members of that committee. The other four members are elected by the county commission. They can be county commissioners, they can be other people in the county. But the four, the four people that's not statutory are elected by the county commission. But they don't have to be county commissioners, okay? What does the committee do? So there's some confusion on this, but this is the main responsibilities of the Financial Management Committee. Establishes and approves policies and procedures for implementing a sound and efficient financial system. So they're putting together a policy and procedure manual, the structure of the finance office, how many employees, what was, what's their job descriptions, what's the procedures and the how they meet? When, when does the financial management committee meet? Where do they meet? This also includes budgeting, accounting, purchasing, payroll, and cash management. These procedures are going to cover all. So the financial management committee, one of their responsibilities is to create these policy procedures. The county legislative body may authorize the committee to assume certain responsibilities. They can do it for, they can serve as a budget committee, they can serve as an investment committee, they could have a certain purchasing committee, or by resolution creates special committees for any of these functions. In my, yes?
I'm sorry, so you talked about the the policies and that there was a certain policy group, so?
They, the financial management committee creates the policies and procedures.
And how many are on that?
Seven.
Seven?
Yes. Four members, elected by the county commission, and the county mayor, director of schools, and highway superintendent, statutorily have to be, so that's seven members. Yeah. Um, so, most counties I have, I have five counties in Upper Cumberland that are under the 1981's financial management system. Two of those counties have their budget committee. That's the same as the financial management committee, the other three do not. You're not asking me, but I'm going to tell you my recommendation. I don't recommend that to happen because the director of schools and the highway departments and those two counties that are serving as budget committee, they won't even say, uh, the director of schools doesn't want to have a say on the budget for the highway department, vice versa. But that's what the county commission chose. It's a lot of politics in that.
I would say in most cases, they're not the budget committee.
Yeah, two, two of five are not, and I think probably most of yours are not.
Typically, the county commission wants to control that process, so I, I, most of them aren't going to give that authority away to another committee.
So if creating a special committee, shall be composed of at least five members each who need not be members of county management bodies, so that means they can or cannot be county commissioners. So that's the special uh, committees that can exist in the financial management committee. The three counties that I have that do not, they have their own budget committee, uh, and they, they don't send anything through the financial management committee because remember, the sole purpose of them is to hire and fire the finance director, which we're going to get to, and create those policies and procedures. So here's what the county department finance looks like. I know it's hard to see it with this screen, but the functions you're going to see is they, they will uh, implement the proper functions of purchasing, cash management, accounting, budgeting, and payroll. So all five of those functions for all departments in the county go through the department finance. Payroll, cash management, budgeting, all that goes through there. This finance committee creates this department, and they have a finance director. That financial management committee appoints the finance director. So there would need to be four votes of the seven members, at least four votes, to approve a finance director. The minimum requirements, BS degrees from a credit college with at least 18 quarter hours or equivalent semester hours in the county. However, the finance committee can select a person without a college degree that has at least two years of acceptable experience in a related position or an equivalent number of other related college courses. So technically, there's not a BS degree requirement. If the experiences are there, the can, the financial management committee can hire somebody. The salary is established by the finance committee, but of course, just like every other line in the budget, it's approved by the county commission. So the county, the finance committee cannot make the county commission pay a certain amount. The county commission has to approve that amount, just like they do any other budget line.
Not tied to any elected official, like the 57, but it's tied to the trustee, this would not?
Yes.
I'm sorry, um, do you have an org chart of how that is now and how it went about the?
I don't have one here, I don't, I don't. I'm sure the mayor or lady can explain that at some point in time, but I don't, I don't have, I don't have that to compare it to how it would be. That would be up to the financial management committee, we wouldn't have a say in that, yeah. Good question. So, the finance committee may dismiss the director, but it's subject to the county commission's approval. One county in East Tennessee, the finance management committee has fired their finance director 30 times. Alright? No laughs at all, okay? 30 times. The county commission does not approve that firing. So that finance director survives and keeps on surviving. Even though he's been fired by the financial management committee, I'm, I'm serious, 30 something years, probably 30 times. It's, it's a high, but the commission's never approved it because they like it, okay? So, commission has the final say on the, on the finance director, on the firing of the finance director. Alright, let's talk about the duties of the finance director. They're going to install and maintain a centralized financial system for the county, including the implementation of the policies that are developed by the financial management committee. So the finance directors go in and embody all those policies and those special committees established by the county commission. The finance director will assist other departments and officials in achieving an efficient financial management system of the county. Serve as or appoint a department employee as a county purchasing agent. So there can be a current employee in the finance office that can be the purchasing agent, or the financial management committee with approval of the commission can hire another person just to do sole, or person to do sole purchasing, that's the third purchasing agent. There's counties that have that, there's counties that let the finance director be the purchasing agent. Finance director also hires personnel with the finance department, including a deputy director. So you have to have a finance director and there has to be a deputy director. And that's the only part of the org chart that's established. That's it. The rest of it's going to be up to the finance offices and the committee.
So this is in addition to um, what we have that'd be an official position?
So what you have would all disappear, and this would take its place.
Yeah.
Think of it that way.
That's the best way to think about it, yeah. What, don't think about what, I mean, I know you're trying to compare, I understand that, but that goes away. Because that financial management committee is going to hire that director. And then they're going to establish in those policies what positions they need based on the money the county commission funds. Yeah. Okay. Trying, I'm not trying to get through it too quickly, but I don't have time for questions, so um, a big part of the finance director's duties, preparing the annual budget. Every department head will submit their budget request through the finance office. So highway, schools, trustee, county mayor, everybody in the county will submit their budget. There's a timeline for adoption of the budget. It's in statute, finance directors are not determined that. The statute says the budget has to be passed by August 31st. Um, but the county commission can adopt their own calendar. The county commission could say, we want to pass a budget by June 30th. And that's up to the commission. Statutorily, the last day to pass a budget is August 31st. All departments, offices, and county will submit budget requests to the finance department, and the director of finance will consolidate the budget and file with the budget committee. So the finance director's job is to receive all those requests. The finance director should not be changing any of those requests. There should be no changes by the finance director. Finance director's going to take those requests, consolidate it into a folder, however you all do the budget, and present it to the budget committee. The budget committee will deliberate on those requests from all departments, and then they'll recommend to the county commission. So the finance director's not changing budget requests. Their job is to, to take the information in, consolidate it, deliver it to the budget committee. Monthly accounting reports, big part of what the finance office does. Um, all commissioners, officials, and department heads will receive monthly financial reports from the finance department, that is statutory. The finance director has to send those monthly reports to all these department heads. Reports will be itemized and show year-to-date actual and budgetary information. So it's a monthly update of the budget. Whereas general law, basically, they do it quarterly. Some counties do it monthly, not many, but the information is not uh, sent out as often as it is on 81. So that's a requirement for the finance office. The finance director will advise the county commission monthly on condition of budget and make recommendations to ensure financial condition of the county is not impaired. So the county commission constantly, you don't meet every month, right? You don't meet every month. But if you met every month, you would know monthly what reports are there, what's the financial condition of every department. Let's talk about person, I want you to say person, do the next one.
Well, purchasing is going to be centralized within this office as well. It's either going to fall under the finance director or you could create, as Ben said earlier, a purchasing agent. Do y'all have a purchasing agent?
No.
Y'all haven't adopted the 57 purchasing act, is that right?
Y'all have person, you don't have a person, agent, you're the agent.
You're the agent.
The director's agent.
Uh, you can have a separate person that is the agent. They would control all the purchasing for all the departments of the county. Or, I, I don't know of an 81 act county that has a separate purchasing agent. In all scenarios I'm aware of, the finance director acts as the purchasing agent. Um, you, you can create one, the law allows you to create a separate uh, department and agent. Finance director, deputy appointed by him serves as a purchasing agent. A lot of times, the deputy director will serve as the purchasing agent or someone else in the office under the finance director. Uh, these are the duties, you're going to create policies and procedures. They're going to lay out how purchasing is going to work. Um, theoretically, and I, I don't, I don't know that we'll have a slide on this later, but I think you were talking about the structure earlier. Theoretically, let's say y'all weren't 57 now. The highway department had folks out there that kept the books. The schools have folks that do that, payroll keep the books, and the, and the county get does. All those folks are going to come under one roof, one office, and all those responsibilities for all three of those funds, those are the three big funds that we're talking about. Schools, the general fund, and the highway fund are all going to fall under the finance. And this, this, all those functions are going to happen in, in one spot, is what's happening. Uh, you do, the, the committee sets the uh, bid threshold. So what's y'all's bid threshold here?
25.
25.
25, or the, is the schools 25 as well? 25. So that would be uh, something that the committee's going to, going to decide. You, you can go up to 50. If you have somebody who is a full-time purchasing agent, that would be something the committee would decide. And the commission is the payer, we're going to have this separate full-time purchasing agent. You are, the law does allow you to go up to 50, but you're at 25. That wouldn't change for anybody, you'd still be at 25.
Sure. So conflict of interest is a little bit more stringent than 81, even though the law changed, I believe, last year to kind of come back from those restrictions. That we're going to focus right now on the restrictions of the finance director. This conflict of interest under the 1981 Act would prohibit the finance director, the purchasing agent that exists, and the employees in the finance department from receiving any type of gift or item of value from vendor or potential vendor. So it's almost like an elected official is prohibited from receiving those gifts. Law prohibits the finance director, person, agent, uh, members of the financial management committee, members of the county commission, other officials of the county, members of the board of education, highway commission if you have one, which you don't here, employees of the finance department, purchasing department from having a direct interest in purchase of supplies, materials, equipment, or contractual services from the county. So whereas under the general law, maybe one of those employees could induce a contract or something, commissioners cannot, right? County commissioners cannot make money and benefit from the county as a contract person. Uh, this is more stringent. Direct interest, a conflict with a person personally or with a business in which the person is the proprietor or partner or has controlling interest. So those are all the conflicts. It, it covers an umbrella of everybody under the 81.
And that, that one used to be a little stricter until this year. It used to be an indirect or a direct conflict. So what, what happened was, uh, at the county uh, finance office may have somebody that works part-time at Walmart. So audit was looking at that like, oh, that's an indirect in, uh, interest or conflict for the county to go do business at Walmart. So that got cleaned up, so it's now just a direct conflict of interest.
So let's talk about employees of the county. They're not affected in any way with this. The finance director does not come in as a hiring or firing agent for all other offices. The offices, department heads are still in charge of who they hire and fire. There's no authority of the finance director to admit, to dismiss any uh, county department head or employee in the office. So there, that's not their role, it's all about financial management. So, there is a county in Tennessee that was able to remove themselves from the act. So when the 81 Act is adopted, everybody comes in, highway department, schools. Wilson County, uh, a few years ago, I don't remember the year, it's been several years ago, removed themselves because the finance director uh, was not maintaining records, was not following accounting procedures, was not doing uh, budget reports timely. Wilson County went to the Department of Education, said, we have a problem. The finance office is not doing their job, it's hurting our uh, system. We would like to pull out. Uh, and the commissioner of education, Department of Education allowed that to happen. State funds may be withheld for failure to provide adequate funds to transfer the responsibilities to the education department. So there's, there would be a timeframe if this was implemented in the schools, if there's not something happening that the schools like, and they, these things, the first uh, bullet point here, the accounting procedures are not good, budgetary procedures, timing reports not being submitted, they could ask for them. Implementation of the system, once it's adopted, the commission shall appoint the members of financial management committee. That's the first thing that happens. So if this was approved, whatever this, if this is approved, whatever, if it's not, whatever, if it's approved, first thing that happens, financial committee is appointed, remember, mayor, director of schools, highway superintendent are three statutory members, and the commission will appoint three or four. Committee would meet within 30 days to appoint a chair and begin the process of hiring a director of finance. So within that first 30 days, the committee will be appointed, the, the committee will meet, they'll vote, elect a chair for the financial management committee, it can be anybody on that committee, and they'll start the process of hiring a, a director of finance. The committee shall develop plans for implementing the financial management system. Uh, like we said, beginning July 1 of next year and completing the process by August of the second fiscal year. So we're looking at August of 2025, if it was done tonight. So, one more slide, one more to questions. Suspension of private or local acts, this is important, some counties get confused on this. If the 81 Act is implemented and adopted, all purchasing, financial, and budgeting, private or local acts that are in conflict with 81 are suspended. So the 81 takes over. No private acts that are related to budgeting or financial, that goes away. Can return to previous acts if the county financial management system 81 is revoked in the future. Revocation occurs via same method of adoption as affected with the fiscal year beginning at least 60 days after passage of the resolution referendum. So if you wanted to, to undo the financial management act, you had to vote with two persons. Okay. Let's have it, four questions we got. Yes?
As far as county employees being unaffected?
As far as county employees being unaffected, I want to make sure that, that this, there's been a concern raised about altering of potential employee salaries within the county. And you already addressed that county employees are unaffected. I know it's in the statute that personnel policies, salaries, anything like that can't be touched as part of this process, correct?
Correct. So none of that changes. Um, the budget doesn't change, the finance director cannot go in and change any part of the budget without commission approval. Salaries wouldn't change. Payroll, let's talk about payroll. So, the finance director is not allowed by law to change any timesheets. When the department head signs off on a timesheet, that's what shall be paid. Now, the finance director can question something on the timesheet, work it out with the department head. But I had a county where the finance director changed the timesheet that was signed by the department head, and that was an audit finding, and that was illegal. So the finance director, again, they're all about the financial management side. They're not about changing things, adjusting things that they don't have any control over. What else?
I know y'all love me asking questions on this commission. From continuing down the same line of thought with this transition, the Financial Management Committee will be the one to set the policies and procedures with the input of the seven people within that body. From the purchasing side, it is not up to the purchasing agent or whoever's acting as the purchasing agent to decide if they like something, whether the money should be spent or not. They're following procedure and statutory law, correct?
Yeah. I mean, once the commission sets everybody's budget, they have the authority to spend their budget. So all this office is gonna do is execute the line items to be spent. They can't say, "I don't really think you should spend this money." If it's budgeted by the commission, it's in a line item. The Highway Department, the schools, they get to spend that money just as it's been appropriated to them.
Right. So you, so another question is, the County Commission does not get to set appropriations outside of the approved budget. And I know we talked about the budgeting committee and your recommendation on what to do. Essentially, for us, if we follow the recommendation, our budgeting process wouldn't change. You know, we would still have our five-member body, you know, the... Currently, our Finance Director does the consolidation, submits the, you know, the proposed budget to us and stuff as well. So the other departments, the School Board's still gonna have direct authority over their budget, none of that changes.
The School Board will still adopt the budget and submit it to you all for approval. Yeah. Let me add one thing.
On the Budget Committee, the only thing I would recommend is, 'cause you're under the 57 Budget Act right now, make a motion or pass a resolution as a commission to set the committee and who's on the committee and how that's appointed. Because you're going by law currently over 57. So now, if you go to the 81, that goes away. And so establish some rules and procedures on how that committee is adopted or appointed.
I have been asked by constituents about moving money that's been appropriated between different funds. Once money is appropriated, we're statutorily responsible to keep it within there unless it's within the, you know, there's a budget amendment that allows it to do. In this specific case, multiple times I've been asked, can school funds be transferred or moved into other funds of the county?
That would work the same under general law, 57, any act. I mean, the money's at the trustee's office. The Finance Office can't go over to the trustee's office and move money around.
Yeah, that don't change. Yes, sir?
Okay. So if the 1981 Act comes in, I know the commission appoints the four other members. I know there's the three statutorily speaking, but the other four members. How long does those four members serve on that board before they're switched out?
It'd be up to the Financial Management Committee. However, those terms doesn't exist. Obviously, the Mayor and the Highway Superintendent are there for their term. Director of Schools is there for their contract or whenever they decide to leave or not appointed by, reappointed by. And then they would establish what the other members' terms are. So it's be up to the Financial Management Committee. I don't believe there's anything in the law.
I would guess it probably gets re-upped every year when all the other committees are re-upped. And most cases, is my guess.
When you say by the Financial Management Committee, that would be one of the policies that they would have to develop, which would also come to be approved by this body. So I just wanna clear, I do not say that they set their own terms. It would be a policy that they'd create and then this body would have to approve that.
I don't know, just to throw this out there, I don't know of a scenario where those four members appointed by the commission aren't commissioners also. Theoretically, y'all could go get four citizens off the street and appoint them. I don't know that in the mighty counties.
Good question that I've been asked a lot, is why haven't more counties moved to the Act?
What, how many were there? Twenty-sevens? I mean, it's, people feel like they're losing control. Schools probably being the big one. That's typically the big fight. Schools don't like it. They feel like they're losing control. I mean, about half the counties in the state are centralized in some form or fashion. 57, 81, or some kind of private act. I mean, it's usually probably politics is why it doesn't happen. Audit's still keeping, putting that recommendation in the audit. They're big believers of it. See, we're big proponents of centralization. I'll be honest, when I went to work for Murray County Schools right out of college, I didn't think I was gonna go work as for the government when I got out of college with an accounting degree. And I got over there and I was like, "Oh, we do our own books over here and the county does their own books." I would, it didn't make a lot of sense to me as somebody coming in from the outside that all these creatures of county government have their own little kingdom and do their own thing. And this just seems like a more efficient way to run government. So I didn't really answer your question. I talked a while, but it's politics.
So, Murray, you saying that, you're saying that you think it's more efficient?
Yeah, I think if the Highway Department has a person doing payroll, the schools have a person doing payroll, the county has a person doing payroll, if you could get that down to one person or two people doing payroll, it seems like that would be a more efficient way to operate.
Because the state audit is coming in every year looking at all of this, and is that not adequate?
Well, having an audit and running something more efficient in a cheaper way, that's two different things, getting audited and running things efficiently.
So, another one. So you brought up about the, you being part of politics. My question is, for the School Board, where do they fit in in this? Because that's a lot of the discussion that's been had or that I've had people calling me. And I think there's some misconceptions out there about, we're not gonna still, we're still not gonna be able to tell them what they can do with their money. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. So I'll say this, you all are gonna have no more control over them than you do now and they're not gonna lose any more power than they have now. So, you know, both sides, you know, a lot of times, commissions think, "Oh, we're gonna get control of the schools." And schools thinks they're gonna lose control and they're both wrong. They're gonna still control their budget, they're gonna pass their budget, they're gonna control their spending that you all appropriate to them. And you're not gonna be able to dictate to them any differently. It's really about those finance, accounting functions, how they're gonna operate. Purchasing will happen in that office as well.
So there's a state law that says county commissioners, the legislative body cannot line out on the school's budget. That stays. That does not change. So they submit their budget, the School Board approves the budget, they submit to the Budget Committee. Budget Committee either says yes or no. If they say no, it goes back to the School Board, School Board tries again until something's decided. Or the new budget law says if the Budget Committee and County Commission doesn't agree on a submitted budget by the School Board, the schools get the same amount of revenues they did last year. And the schools have to develop their expenses inside of that revenue. And that, they can do that up to three years. So that's under general law, under 57, under 81, under private act. That law is still there. That does not change. Yes, sir?
So one of my questions is, if, okay, so a few years ago, when we went to 57, correct? What was the main reason? I know the state wants us to all go to 81 if they prefer. You know, that's the way they prefer. So what would be the reason we went to 57 instead of going to 81 at that time? What was that, four or five years ago?
They were, y'all weren't anything at that point in time here, just general law. They were probably just happy to get you to 57 because that brought in the General Fund and the Highway Fund. They would've loved for you to probably went to 81 then.
They could've went to 81.
They could, yes.
They didn't have to. It ain't like it's there yet. It's like, you could do, if you go 81, can you come back to 57?
You could. Audit really wouldn't want you to.
And I want to speak to the previous Highway Superintendent, but I had discussions with him. And when he called me, he said, "I need help with my accounting, my budgeting, my purchasing. I want to go to 57." At first, he didn't understand it. He and I had a lot of discussions with former county mayor, we talked about it. And that was kinda, his, he pushed for that, the Highway Superintendent did. So that's one of the reasons Smith County went to the 57.
Sometimes it's just timing. The last county I worked with was Union County. They were a general law county, so they weren't like you all where they already had the Highway and the General Fund together. Had a new Highway Superintendent come in and had three ladies in his office that were ready to retire. Timing was just right. He's losing some folks. And the School Board lost their finance purchasing. So the timing was just kinda right in that county and everybody kinda said, "How do you, let's do it."
So I've been asked by a couple commissioners here, of what, you know, why does audit push this? We're not auditors, remember? We're just C-Task consultants. We didn't write the 1981 Act law. I was one years old, okay? So, but I can tell you what audit has told me for my eighteen years of C-Task. And it's the same response every year. They say, one advantage, or several, but one advantage is it's all centralized under one roof. One person, one office is overseeing all those accounting functions we talked about. The second thing is Moody's, Standards and Poor's, Fitch's, all those credit services that give you that credit rating when you go to borrow money, to issue debt, to build a jail, to build a school, or build a building, whatever you're buying, whatever you issued debt for. They look at the audit, they go to that back page for findings and they go that back page for recommendations. If they see that there's a recommendation and the county's not centralized, they will give you a lower credit rating. Now, this is coming from audit. It's not coming from Ben Rogers. It's coming from audit. I have looked at some credit ratings. I did a study for C-Task a few years ago about credit ratings throughout the state. Those counties that were centralized had the best credit ratings. So what does that mean? If you have a higher credit rating, your interest payments are lower. You'll get a better interest rate. So that's the second advantage we talked about. The third advantage is they've seen counties save money on cooperative purchasing or one-time purchasing where the Finance Office can buy things that all departments are using in bulk. And that's the three reasons they talk about it. And I think it's probably a lot easier for them to have access to records by going to one place instead of going to three different places. Now, that's unofficial in my opinion, but I'd say that probably helps. Now, what are the disadvantages? There's gonna be some cost upfront. Now, that depends on what y'all do. You gotta, you might need to buy a building or find, or purchase or provide a space that you don't have. It may cost an additional pool fee. And obviously, Wes, there are talk about disadvantages of politics. Yes, sir?
I just wanna open the floor to School Board members we have.
No, that's not where...
We can't do that now?
That's not our rules, no. No, if you wanna ask them a question, you can do that, but you can't just open the floor, no. That's our rules. Following comment, yes.
So I asked, so it's always...
You can ask them a question, yes.
I asked the Perry Director of School, "How do you feel about this?" Just your opinion. Because I've got several phone calls, that kinda thing, from employees of yours, but I just wanna get your opinion on it and just not the commissioners here because y'all are elected officials as well as far as the board members. So I think we all need to be open before any decisions made, but I just wanna get your opinion on it.
Ben, thank you. You do a great job. We've got a great relationship with you. Thank you for being here tonight. Anything I say is not pointed out. I'm gonna ask a couple quick. Not to sound arrogant, but when I took over, we had a, we had a fund balance of about a million and a half. It was supposed to be three million and the whole of next year will be coming in front of you guys. Instead, we've do good investments, the grant writing. We're sitting on ten or twelve million dollar fund balance, gave about twenty-five percent raises, put roofs on the schools. So I guess as an arrogant statement, why would I want you to manage my money, our hour money, Smith County money? And you can't spend it. I mean, that's been said. So I think we're doing a great job, my department head's here tonight. I don't have the use, I mean, and I'm a business person, y'all know, me know that, okay? Mayor Nesbit graciously comes to me in the right way and said, "Hey, Mr. Smith, would you consider doing this?" And I think White County, Ben's White County, correct?
Yeah, White County did it under Charlotte Curtis when he was mayor back in eighty-five or eighty-six or something, yeah.
Well, he asked me to go there and he said, "I just want you to consider." So I had a good friend up there, you may know him, you're from the Cookware here. You know Stephen and BK, oh, yeah, both of them. And I went up and saw BK and I knew he told me the truth. And I said, "BK, I'm not flavoring you because it just makes sense." You know? He said, "It's the worst thing we ever done." I said, "Tell me why." And he said, "It's not efficient. It gives too much, too much control to one area. It puts less eyes on it instead of more eyes." And I, you know, I don't think he's right in what we've done, I don't. And Ben, I'm gonna put you on the spot a little bit. Sure. You're a county commissioner, aren't you?
Yes, sir, nine years.
Have you ever made a recommendation for, but county commissioners?
I, full transparency, the Mayor and I talked about it. We have a great county mayor, Randy Porter, he's wonderful. He's smart, he's accounting mind and we manage our funds real well. And my question to him was, "Would you consider it?" And he said, "No, we do just fine." I said, "Well, what happens when you're not here? And what happens when your term's over?" And the next person comes in and we don't know who that is. And I'm just giving you my personal, this is not speaking for C-Task at all, okay? This is my personal, but the county's got a $230 million budget, folks. We're general law, straight general law. We have Highway Department, schools, county, we're three different, and we function just fine.
We need to go there and do this next, man. Get me on the agenda.
They, it failed by one vote in 2008, I believe. But my concern is the future. And, because Mayor Porter's not always gonna be there. If he goes and we get somebody that doesn't have that financial mind, what would...
And I understand that. And when it's mandated, I mean, that's like everything else in the state, as well, they mandated and they try to issue debt. We don't feel it, but we're not just being obvious.
No, I've asked auditors and I've asked legislators, if you put this as a recommendation every year in audit, why don't you just mandate it? And it's always a political challenge.
You stated about twenty-six schools, which is about seventy-five percent of schools that are on there, or nine of it. And so, until it's mandated, I don't know about the school system unless it was...
So there's four under the 57s, that's twenty-nine. There's how many private acts? We have eleven?
There's fourteen under the 57.
But three or four of them have schools in it. So that's, so that's thirty, thirty-one. I think there's eleven. So about forty-two counties are centralized with schools in it.
But, you know, I don't know, I don't think anybody here, I think very few went and checked with other systems and see if that actually works. And I think that's huge die out and some of my style has. I just, you know, I don't feel the need. We were basically as a county, I stepped away from receivership two years ago and...
That'd be five. That's five, sir. Five, five years ago.
I'm talking to him, sir. Go ahead.
Well, you stated misinformation, sir.
I wasn't...
You stated misinformation, that was five years ago.
Okay. Were you reducing it to five years ago?
Yes, and then we reduced them as well.
That's, but that's...
I think there should be study. There's, I have five counties. Candy County just did it four years ago, I believe, three years ago. Just by looking at their finances, it's a different county. I would compare it to the Norwegians. They went from almost dead broke to now they got fifty percent of their expenses in fund balance. I'll vouch. I work with normal every year on the budget. Y'all have a heavenly...
You have a great relationship, you know?
Yep.
You got a healthy foundation.
And there's no way you can touch your fund balance, not even, because the law doesn't allow it. You know, so they can't touch it now, but there's no law that they're allowed to touch your money.
And I think there's a misunderstanding too, if a department is, well, they can't take that money and transfer it into other counties, correct?
No, I mean, so there's some laws that allow during the budget process, like the county can transfer money from debt service to general fund or solid waste to general fund only at budget time under top forty-nine. I don't know the law, Wes, did you make that up?
Yeah, it would have to stay.
It would have to stay, y'all.
It would have to stay, y'all. They cannot, commissioners can't vote to transfer money from the fund one forty-one, one forty-two, one forty-three, one forty-six, any of those funds into any other fund in the county. That's under top forty-nine, so. There are extensions for other funds, which maybe counties haven't did that in the past, move some money to different funds at budget time, but you can't touch the school.
And it makes sense, if it's credit rating, and then borrowing, and stuff like that, you know?
What are the questions?
I actually have a question.
Sure.
You said you spoke...
I'm sorry, Eric, I can't hear you.
Oh, thank you. You said you spoke with director of schools in which county?
I didn't, not to the director, I spoke to the county commissioner of Wyck County.
Okay, what specifically did they say was the cons of having brought the schools in under? Did they explain that?
Was it specifics, or that, or when I talked to Wyck County?
Whoever you spoke to, you said it was the worst thing they ever did?
That's gonna be mayor Inesbit, was that right? He just said it was very inefficient.
It was inefficient?
It didn't have enough eyes on it, he felt like it had one department, like a lot of the office, you're putting less eyes on it instead of more eyes. More government.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, someone else?
Y'all gotta bring this mic up to you.
I think it's all, I think it's all.
I just wanna be clear on one thing, what surplus money that they've got in their budget now? It can't be taken out and used for something else.
That's no different than that today, ten years ago, or if y'all adopted the eighty-one act, that's all gonna work the same way, you can't touch that. You couldn't theoretically touch certain highway money, that's in the highway money, you couldn't take that moving into the general fund either.
Mr. Smith, what's that?
Maybe we got stole, everybody here. Only thing we can control is the budget we give the school board, right? There's no job cuts, right? No job cuts on this whole process, it's just gonna be a hiring of the feds.
Correct, correct.
But, all the people, like the board, all they gotta go into one roof, correct?
Correct, so...
That's the league school board building, and going all in one roof.
Well, they would go wherever the committee or the finance director decides, if the committee decides that office is gonna be dead or...
County County's finance office is in the school board building.
Well, it's like you saying, we got four to handle whatever money, and all them will go into one roof, right?
Yes, ideally, that's the way it should work.
Put the rest of the county, that's what we, then the highway department's all the money.
Yes, finance department should be under one roof, ideally, for efficiency.
But really, no job cuts, you just, leave the kind of highway one.
That's right.
It wouldn't, I don't think we talked about this, they have a maintenance of effort, it wouldn't have any impact on their maintenance of effort. Highway department, which got maintenance of effort, it wouldn't have any impact on their argument.
I know we've got a few commissioners who are here present, who were a part of the group in the past of fifty-seven act. And I would like to get their input on the process then. Why was the fifty-seven act chosen, why did we go straight to the eighty-one? And I know, I see if you went here, if anybody's wanna speak to that. When you guys implemented the fifty-seven, you implemented the fifty-seven, you didn't do the eighty-one, is there a reason for that? Or, you know, can you just expand upon why specifically the fifty-seven at the time and not the eighty-one?
Everybody else here besides me and Bill, as part of making all the commission, I was the one that was financing it. Chaz and Eric, I didn't... We discussed it, and we ended up working on this, and we, the audit committee got formed in, I think, twenty thirteen to twenty fourteen. The format is made of, so this is Smith County, or high county commissioners, look at that audit, at that time, I had four fifty-fifteen findings, a lot of mine. We went through this, saw this, we made a recommendation, I was part of that before, still have the day, Larry Tucker-Worson is our chairman, did a fantastic job, still needs to stay. We made the recommendation to budget finance to, to centralize it now. We spent two nights, and we began counting on us, both nights, going through all of the different options. We discussed eighty-one, there were some that wanted to go straight to eighty-one, some went to fifty-seven, and I think Bill, at the end, we just kinda came down, but we saw this as a baby step, this progression.
And that's correct.
We saw at the time, the means of getting there, but a lot of these questions to me, and we, we, we went through some of these things a little bit reminiscent for me, went through some of these same questions in twenty sixteen, if we passed that in twenty sixteen, went into twenty seventeen. I mean, it's already been documented, basically, now, county wasn't a great spot then. But I think you sit here today, six million dollars fund balance, what our budget is, that's pretty good. You guys get big raises, you have insurance, I appreciate that. Glad to see that went through, right? I think that was definitely a good move, and paying off was the right decision, I think it always was an intention of efficiency, did they? Went through that process, nobody lost a job. There are people that worked for the highway department, that came into, came into finance department, there's no job loss. I don't know if we have a number of what that costs, we probably think like, I don't know, maybe hardware, computer, maybe things like that, but... When he got taken out, solid waste, roads, and roof over there, as far as the tire management question, more money, there wasn't a predictable then. I mean, is that pretty accurate?
That's pretty common, any questions, pre-serve?
All right, so, to piggyback on that, I've been contacted by a lot of constituents about possibly losing their job. It's been established that nobody's losing their job. That being said, there's a lot of rumors going around right now. I've been told that there are specific people at the board that write grants, basically, that's their job. So, I just wanted to ask if that's true, if it's not?
There's no grant, rather, we write them, I write several, Normal writes several, each department, I think he's brought in over a million dollars extra, which they don't have to do, but we do not have to write.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Chairman, I'll try to... We'll be here, so...
Okay. Any other questions or discussions?
Well, I would ask, what concern did I have with more internal, with not being paid?
Purchasing has been a big concern that I've heard from, and the efficiency of purchasing, to make sure that it's done in a timely manner in a way that we're not going to do a bad purchasing. Now, one thing I guess we can say is the financial management committee, if the eighty-one is adopted, will establish those procedures. So, you know, while we don't know what those procedures are, it's gonna be done with input of the financial management committee. And the whole purpose of the eighty-one act is efficiency, y'all keep hearing, it's efficiency, it's efficiency, it's efficiency. It's to make things more efficient. And I wanna make clear that there would be no intention of trying to hinder anybody in any county department or the school for being able to access that, or to be able to do that. My question for Daisy is, on average, you know, I know obviously, I'm sure best recommendation is to get a PO in in a timely manner and plan ahead. And I know we have emergency purchase procedures as well, we have nominal amount procedures, I'm sure, you know, I know at the policy. But on average, when a PO is submitted, what is the average turnaround to get that?
In an hour, it stays on that beat at all times, constantly filtering emails for those requests. So, typically, well less than an hour. There are circumstances where it's a large dollar purchase that, you know, did have to be checked, or things like that. But, if everything's in order as it should be, I think most departments, you know, would vouch for that as far as our department.
And one thing that I wanna make sure that everybody knows and is clear, the school system does a great job in their finances. There's nobody disputing that, no, they do a fantastic job at it. I don't know what the specific procedures are for the school system, but if they work for the school system, I don't see why there would be a shift in that and take away from something that works well for them, if those procedures work. I also wanted to make sure, because the school system does have some other accounts, just like we have fee accounts at the county, and the clerks, you know, the court clerk and them have certain accounts that don't run through the trustee's office. There are some accounts through the school system, because the eighty-one act, it may be for you, Ben, or more, but the eighty-one act only covers stuff that runs through the trustee's office. So, I know schools have, you know, they have an internal account at the school, they raise money, fund raises, and stuff like that. Those kind of accounts are not affected by this, correct?
That's right, that's correct.
So, there's, so there's, I wanted to clear that up because that was also a question that an administrator had asked me about. So, I wanted to make sure that, you know, those kind of things aren't going to be touched. It's only money that runs through the trustee's office that is affected by this. Also, while I love Daisy, and I was prepared to, but I love Daisy, we have to be aware of who has this process. If we adopt the eighty-one act, we don't know who the finance director's gonna be. The financial management committee is going to be the ones to select that position. And that's gonna be a very important position. That person's going to be taking on a lot of responsibility through the consolidation. And as, you know, whatever the financial management committee, whoever is appointed on there by this commission, we gotta make sure that those members know what they're doing, and that they can go through that process. Because it's already been said, financial management committee, once procedures are done, once policy's done, once finance director done, it's almost hands-off at that point. So, really, you know, that first initial step, whoever's on that financial management committee, if it's willing to go that way, that's a very important thing. I do want to let everybody know, I had some additional information that I printed off before this meeting. So, I did attempt to reach out to some other counties. I wanted to know what was going on, and how some other counties were affected by this. I called my friend, Brandon Marks, and he told me I could reference him in this. He's an old buddy from higher education days, he was a legislative lawmaker for nine years. Now, he works for CTS out in East Tennessee, out in the county, he is a training consultant, he does CFO classes. And I reached out to him, and I just went, like, hey, Brandon, I know you've done this from the audit side, you've done this from the CTS side, can, you know, I get some feedback, you know, how'd you see this going? And he repeated a lot of things that, that's already been said, but he specifically referenced County County. He said, hey, you need to check out County County. Well, I happen to know the chairman of the board of education for County County, so I reached out to her, and I wanted to speak to her. And you guys, if you got that printout, you'll see an email from her. And I asked her, I said, hey, just tell me what you think about the nineteen eighty-one act. And she got it to me today, I reached out to her, I didn't give her much time for it. She sent an email, and if you should have that, and if you don't, that's up there at the front, pass that around. Now, let you read that for yourself on the implementation. There's also a letter that October did a press release earlier this year. County County in twenty sixteen was considered to be in a financial management crisis. They started the process in twenty nineteen, of implementing the eighty-one act, and then by October twenty-one, they had it completely done. On their most recent audit that ended in twenty twenty-two, you know how many audit findings they had through the year? Not a single one. And that's unheard of, and I can't, it's been single digits the amount of time that's happened, unless I'm wrong to you. I mean, I mean, not having an audit, you know, it's super rare, they credited it, and the comptroller's office, if you read, Mr. Mumpower's release there, attributes it to the centralization that they did, and to the accountability, and the transparency, and the efficiency of it. So, when we look at other school systems, I believe County, unless there's been another one, I think they were the most recent county implemented too. Has there been anybody else implemented it?
No.
Yeah, so they're the, literally the most recent example. Now, for full transparency, County County did push back, they did not want to do it. The board of education did not want to implement the eighty-one act. And Ben, I know that's one of your counties, and that's a true statement, correct?
Yeah.
So, they did push back, they didn't want it, they didn't want to do it. But now, you can read the words of Lisa Thomas, who is, who's actually, some of y'all in here, everybody knows who she is, she was born here, she was raised here. She went through the Smith County school system, graduated from Smith County High School. She's the chairman of that board now, and she's singing praises about the eighty-one act anyway, does. And the biggest thing for them, and it does, is it allows them to know exactly what's going on and be able to make decisions. As the board of education, they can focus on that, and focus on doing what's best for those kids, for the community. So, it is a success story, and it can happen. But, it didn't start out in the best of shape, because they didn't want to go to it. But now, as they've been through it, they've got it, and they enjoy it. And those aren't my words, it's not, you know, it's not my opinion, you can read it there. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that, that, you know, there is another county, and again, not a lot of counties have gone through this. And there's a reason, there's a reason for that. And there's gonna, you know, if it's will, will this body ever go that direction, there's gonna be some bumps in the road, and things that have to be discussed. And, you know, it's not all pros, there are gonna be some cons, and other things we've gotta think about and consider too. But I do want y'all to know that it doesn't work, and it hasn't worked very recently, and it was not too far from here.
Any other questions or discussions? As old preacher said, you say all hearts and minds are clear. I would take a motion to adjourn. Motion and second, all those in favor?
No.
Opposed? You are adjourned.